Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. For the folks at home, if you'd be kind enough to pan over to the big screen so they can see what we'll be discussing tonight. It's the first meeting of the month. As always, we have the Supervisor's Report, which is a report of the financial condition as of a particular moment. We have two public hearings tonight, one at 7:35. It's a proposed amendment to the Fire Protection District Fire Service Agreement. This is essentially just a ministerial act. Thankfully, the residents of both villages voted in favor of increasing the LOSAP, which is the very small stipend that gets distributed to our volunteer firefighters. And so we are updating our agreements to reflect the town's contribution, which is 100% by the way, for that program. And that's simply the change in those fire service agreements. On the agenda items, number one, we'll be discussing, we received information, actually, we didn't receive it, we had to go out and find it ourselves, that Dutchess County Public Transit is endeavoring to remove the loop bus from Tivoli and the town of Red Hook and the village of Red Hook, and to end Route C at Tops in Rhinebeck. And so we'll be discussing that. There is a, rather egregiously, they've decided to hold a public info session, not in our community, by the way, where the service is being removed, but in Rhinebeck this Thursday at 6:00 PM. We'll move right on to those resolutions to improve, to approve the amended IMA and fire contracts. Also, we will be extending our water service operator agreement. We'll be approving next year's dog control and housing services agreement. We will have a presentation from our engineers about where we stand, assessing the feasibility of extending the sewer or creating a new sewer district in the township, traditional neighborhood district, which essentially is from here down to Hannover. We'll have a brief presentation from Arch Top Fiber, who is hoping to lay fiber on this side of the Hudson River through our community and many others. We are going to do some environmental review on the potential acquisition of parklands on the former UTS properties. We are going to discuss very briefly the health insurance policies for our employees and one or two department reports and some other business. So, we will try to move as quickly and expeditiously as possible. We've got several hour meeting ahead of us. So, without further ado, let's go to the Supervisor's Report. This is for the period ending November 30. We begin the month with an opening balance of $4,824,000 and change. We have receipts of $748,000, dispersments of a little over a million. We've got a final ending balance of $4,565,000. You have in front of you your budget adjustments as prepared by our bookkeeper and Conway. And the variance reports. Have a chance to take a look at everything? Any questions? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion to accept the Supervisor's Report and the budget adjustments.
So moved.
Thank you, Christine. Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Bill. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, Julia?
Aye.
And myself. We also have the Clerk's Report. Deanna, if you'd be kind enough to read that?
Town Clerk's Report for the period ending November 1st, for the period of November 1st to November 30, 2023. Total local shares remitted to the Supervisor, $5,078.04. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for the Spay Neuter Program, $24. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $112.50. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing licenses, $1,666.46. Total state, county, and local revenues, $6,881. And, I certify that vouchers numbered 31261 to 31346, processed in the month of November 2023, are inaccurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the Town Board.
Very good. Is there a motion to accept the Clerk's Report? Second?
Second.
Thank you, Julia. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Okay, let's move right along. We're a couple minutes late for our very first public hearing. We'll come back to announcements in between the two public hearings. Deanna, if you'd be kind enough to read the public hearing announcements for the first one.
Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a concurrent public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on Tuesday, December 12th, 2023, at 7:35 PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. One, to hear all interested persons regarding a proposed amendment number one to Fire District, Fire Protection District Fire Service Agreement between the Town of Red Hook and the Village of Tivoli for 2023 and 2024. And two, to hear all interested persons regarding a proposed amendment number one to Fire Protection District Fire Service Agreement between Town of Red Hook and the Village of Red Hook and Red Hook Fire District Fire Company for 2023 and 2024. Both agreements relate to the existing Red Hook Fire Protection District embracing the territory outside the villages of Red Hook and Tivoli. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed agreement are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. Deanna Cochran, by order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated November 14th, 2023, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Very good. Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to open this public hearing with a little background for the folks in the audience who are at home. Back in 2007, this stipend program was established with an annual amount of $500 per year for a qualified volunteer who would incur expenses in the pursuit of volunteering for us, for our community. And it has now been adjusted since New York State enabling legislation was passed many years ago that would allow for an increase. Because the fire companies are creatures of the villages, village residents can vote and did vote by public referendum to increase that stipend from $500 to $1,200 a year. This was at our request. We had asked the villages to entertain increasing that stipend because we value our public services and our fire companies, our volunteer fire companies are critical, not only to our safety, but critical to our financial health. And I see tonight, we have many members of both Red Hook and Tivoli Fire Departments, and it's a good opportunity to, once again, to say thank you for all the work that you all do for us. With that being said, would somebody like to make some comments for tonight's first public hearing? Christopher? If you'd be kind enough just to say your name?
I will. Christopher Close. I really appreciate the Fire Department. They're terrific. Excuse me. We had a fire in Lincoln 99 that burned down our barns. The Fire Department was there as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, you can't save a barn once it starts on fire. But they are amazing neighbors and friends and family members. So, please, I'd just join in and we all join in and say thank you so much for the years and years of service. We can't do it without you.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, very good. Well, at this time, I would entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor? Julia?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Myself. Again, thank you all for showing up, Fire Company members, and please let us know what else we can do to help you because that's all you do for us, is help us. So we appreciate it very much. Okay, we're getting close to our 7:45 public hearing. But beforehand, a couple of announcements. We've received some good news. Department of State has approved our grant application to update the town's comprehensive plan. Of course, with good news comes all of the work associated with that. And so, congrats, everyone. We're going to be reaching out to lots of community members and stakeholders to form a comprehensive plan update committee sometime in 2024. And we look forward to members being interested in joining and working. If you're not familiar with this process, it can be rather extensive. We're not necessarily predicting that it's a full update to the comprehensive plan, but certainly, the first objective would be to review the plan to see what updates may be necessary. And so this grant of nearly $100,000 will help us with paying for consultants and so on and so forth associated with that project. Dutchess Tourism would like to let folks know that they have a program where you can be a tourism ambassador. There's a training schedule for the 19th. You will need to register, it says, by today, but I imagine if you get to them tomorrow, they'll be able to accommodate you and there's some benefits associated with that program as well. Okay, why don't we move right into our second public hearing, if we could, Deanna?
Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook, regarding Bard College Acquisition, Conservation, Easement, and Trails Project under the town's Community Preservation Fund Program. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on December 12th, 2023, at 7:45 PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, pursuant to Town's Community Preservation Fund CPF Program, to hear all interested persons regarding the acquisition of an interest or right in real property to preserve open space pursuant to Section 247 of the General Municipal Law, including the purchase of a contractual right necessary to achieve the purposes of such provisions for each of the projects described below. With respect to the projects described below, the town expects to identify an eligible, not-for-profit conservation organization to hold the conservation easement interests, with the town having a third-party enforcement right, and the town expects to apply for matching funds such that the town's share is not expected to exceed 50% of the acquisition costs plus estimated additional project-related costs, and is proposed to be financed from the CPF Program. UTS parcel, application submitted by Bard College as holder of a contract right for acquisition of the following interests with respect to an approximately 260.28 acre parcel located at 14-109 Seminary Drive, including, one, a fee interest in an approximately 78 acre portion of the parcel bordering the Hudson River, including lands underwater; two, a conservation easement with respect to an approximately 39 acre portion of the parcel adjacent to County Road 103, River Road; and three, a public access easement approximately 25 feet in width with respect to a portion of the parcel along Route 103, River Road; and with respect to a portion of the parcel adjacent to the fee parcel to serve as part of a connector trail to Montgomery Place Trails. Montgomery Place Parcels, application submitted by Bard College for acquisition of a public access easement approximately 25 feet in width with respect to a portion of the parcels located at 20 Davis Way and 9 Gardner's Way. Bard College Parcels, application submitted by Bard College for acquisition of a public access easement approximately 25 feet in width with respect to a portion of the Bard College campus, including portions of the following: River Road, 9 Cedar Hill Road, 1259 River Road, 62 Bay Road, 1469 Anandale Road. And all interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. Please take further notice that copies of said application are available for review at the Office of the Town Clerk, Red Hook Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated November 21st, 2023, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. Before we open the public hearing, just a brief description of the proposed project for the folks either in the audience or at home who may not be familiar with this specific project or in general with community preservation funded proposals. Going back to, it looks like the computer's a little glitchy today. Going back to the year 2007, again, the public had an opportunity to vote by referendum to institute a real estate transfer fee to create a specific fund that could only be used for preserving open space, purchasing parklands or recreational lands, or purchasing historic properties. And the Red Hook residents did in fact do that back in 2007. And so, we have amassed over the years nearly $6.2 million that we have leveraged with land trusts, county, state, federal agencies to purchase development rights, parklands, and other open space assets, trails, rec lands. And so this is a continuation of utilizing that fund for a specific project. What is being proposed in this application are really essentially three things. One is the acquisition of a portion of the UTS, the former UTS properties, for a park. And that is this blue area here, approximately 6869, when it's surveyed, we'll know exactly, dry acres and another 10 or so underwater acres that are already part of that parcel. If you're familiar with this property in Barrytown, what we are essentially saying is the land south of Messina House here, the land south of Seminary Drive. Also, as part of this project, provided technology wants to cooperate, here we go. On the eastern boundary over here, portion, there would be a conservation easement, one that would allow for some agriculture as well here to permanently protect these fields and the view shed in particular on this parcel. There'd be a small cutout, if you will, about an acre and a half here around the water tower that could be used for some type of agricultural structures. So we have parklands in blue is the first item. The second action would be a conservation easement in this red highlighted area. And then the third action would be public access trails throughout the combined Bard College properties. And here is, I believe we can get that all in one screen, but I'll start here, down at the bottom. So you can see the trails that will extend. For those of you who are familiar with the UTS property, you know there are several trails on the property currently. The one that most folks may have enjoyed over the years is what's referred to as the Father's Trail, and it goes along the tracks here and along the Tivoli Bays area. What we are purchasing in addition to the parklands is 5.4 miles worth of trails throughout all of the Bard properties here. You see how it extends, apologies, it seems to be fickle tonight. It extends through Montgomery Place. Here's Montgomery Place. Both on the eastern, you'll notice that there's a trail on both the eastern and western portion of the properties. Yeah, I'm not sure why it's so fickle tonight, but it is, the connection. This is the Empire State Trail here. And what's hoped for, and we'll have to figure out something in this area here, is to perhaps bring pedestrians and bicyclists, you know, off of River Road so that they can enjoy walking and biking and the view without being on River Road itself. So that's, in a nutshell, what's being proposed. The total cost of the project would be $3 million. What will happen if the town decides to go ahead is they will put up 50% of the funds from the Community Preservation Fund. Seneca Hudson, at its Board of Directors meeting today, approved their 50% acquisition cost of $1.5 million. So the funding is in place to accomplish all three of these objectives. With that being said, I will try to keep the screen up. Who would like to speak at the public hearing? We do have a sign up sheet. If you'd like to just come up to the mic, I don't know that we will, we need to have a sign up sheet if we don't have that many speakers. But at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. And Bill? Julia? Christine?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Why don't we see how many speakers we have? Shall we begin? Who would like to speak? Mr. Aldridge, would you like to speak? Would you be kind enough to come up to the microphone, however, to do so?
Happy to do so. It's been a loss of time.
Been now.
Of this dignity. I'm Wind Aldridge, 845 River Road, Barrytown. I think this is one of the most exciting actions taken by our town since the amazing vote years ago to establish the Land Conservation Fund. I know that isn't the right name. The park with its river and mountain views, its access to South Bay, its trails, many created by the former owner, the beautiful meadows to be returned to active farming under Conservation Easement, and so important to the views from River Road, they designated Scenic Byway and the Empire State Trail. An eventual reuse of the campus buildings by our wonderful college. Thank you, Town Board, and Robert, Seneca Hudson, and Ned, Bard, and Leon. The benefits to this community and region will be beyond measure and will only increase with time. It appears that Major Livingston's stone gatehouse on Dock Road is included in the acreage coming to the town. It is a contributing feature of the National Historic Landmark District. If it is to be retained and used, treat it well. If the parcel is subdivided and sold, please be sure it first receives a preservation easement. As your former town historian, I would like to close with three historic moments in the heritage of Messina, the historic name of the country seat. First, of Major John R. Livingston, starting in the 1790s, and then of the Aspen Walls. Livingston built Edgewater in the 1820s on a corner of his property for a daughter. First, in 1812, Livingston hosted his friend Washington Irving at Messina for a few days, during which time, the writer became bewitched by the view and composed one of the most evocative and earliest in our literature celebrating mountain scenery and atmospherics. It is the view from our future park, and you will find it at the opening of Irving's famous short story, Rip Van Winkle. Second, in September 1824, the Marquis de Lafayette, during his celebrated return tour of America 50 years after our revolution, stepped ashore from his steamboat at Lower Red Hook Landing, as Barrytown was then called, and was driven up the hill to pay his respects to one of his few surviving fellow officers. After Major Livingston, he called on the widow of General Montgomery, Montgomery Place next door, and then attended a boozy banquet and dance at Clermont. Livingston survived for another 27 years, long enough to be photographed by Matthew Brady, dying at 96, the last officer, veteran of the revolution. Third, Messina was later purchased by John Lloyd Aspenwall, a retired New York shipping magnate whose firm has built a railroad across the east coast of Panama, connecting it to passenger vessels from the east coast and providing similar passage north to San Francisco for the 49ers rushing to the goldfields. Aspenwall hugely enlarged the Livingston House, but regrettably, it was destroyed by fire in the 1880s, replaced by the red brick Victorian that still stands. In the summer of 1868, he took his family abroad and rented the place to his New York City friend Theodore Roosevelt, Sr. And so it came to pass that here at Barrytown, Teddy Roosevelt, age nine, was first smitten with a love of nature and wild places, birds, amphibians, trees, while exploring the South Bay, meadows, and woods, while documenting it all in his earliest diary, now preserved at Harvard, but also has been published. Thus, what will become our park is where our greatest conservation president, the preserver of the Grand Canyon and millions of acres of diverse habitats and wonders, started his lifelong passion. History doesn't get better than that. P.S. It was a very hot and humid August, and the family never returned, opting for Long Island's north shore breezes at Oyster Bay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. Who else would like to speak on the topic? Mr. Wills?
Supervisor, my name is Robert Wills, Rhine Cliff resident, past Commodore of the Hudson River Ice Yacht Club, and president of a new organization we just started, the Hudson River Ice Yacht Preservation Trust. We, all of us ice boaters that are still standing are not long for standing. We're getting older and there's less and less ice to sail with. So our time on the Hudson River is limited. And I want to convey to you the importance that Tivoli South Bay has to us. We've always used the bay as our quote-unquote "home ice" when the Hudson River wouldn't be sailable. We developed relationships with landowners there. Most importantly, the unification of the logical seminary, which allowed us access to Tivoli Bay to launch our boats. Access included driving down close to the bay so we can unload our historic ice yachts and sail them on Tivoli Bay. It's our hope that that type of relationship will continue with the town. We think it's a mutually beneficial relationship for both of us. The ice boats are certainly still an inspiration, even though they're no longer the fastest vehicles on earth. But they inspire many, especially young people, which we hope to instill some pleasure and love of science. instill some pleasure and a love of science in them going forward. The more we can see the ice boats, the better, so I hope that we can have a relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. So who else would like to speak on the topic? Don't be shy. Mr. Baz?
My name is Douglas Baz. I'm a 40-plus year, 40-year resident of Barretown, and I'd just like to second what some of the previous speakers have said about the, how much, we in Barretown, of course, appreciate that this wonderful view that we have of the mountains will continue and that we'll continue to be able to use that now as public land. I think it's extraordinary in this day and age that, you know, a town had the foresight, this board had the foresight to set up a fund that would allow this to happen as opposed to ramping, rampant development. Money usually speaks, and in this case, I think it's just been an incredible purchase and concept. And speaking for myself and hopefully for everyone in Barretown, I think it's, I tip my hat to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak? Brian?
Hello, my name's Brian Reed, County Red Hook. Also echo the hope that the town will allow access to the bay, not only in the winter, but I'd love to see there be opportunities for, also for small boat launching, or canoes, kayaks. I know the bay is not the most ideal with the tides and things like that, but as a year-round access for that, so ability to get perhaps vehicles down to a location that's close enough to carry small boats down would be great. Just from experience and years of ice boating there, safety has to be a primary concern. I notice it's, you know, obviously it's along the tracks. It's always been a priority of our organization, our club, to promote safety as people, you know, they're right there, they're gonna want to perhaps cross the tracks to get to the river, but that's something that has to be taken into consideration. And hopefully it's not a fence, that would be awful, but at some way that has to be really understood, so it's a great proposal. Also, there's, I often have to go across the river to find great places to hike along the river, and there's many great parks there, so I'm just so excited that Red Hook now has this opportunity to have a park that I don't have to go across the river to walk the dog, along the river. So I've used the Father's Trail often, but it's nice that that's part of our town property, and hopefully will be in these trails established, so thank you.
Anyone else? Linda?
Linda Keeling, Fitch Lane, Red Hook. I think that this purchase is really good for the community. It's going to open it up to a lot of people, and some of those people are people with disabilities. Tonight, I was pleased to notice that four of the six spots for the disabled are filled, so that's good, and if you get into this building. So whatever you're gonna build eventually in this area, we have to make it handicap accessible. And the other thing I'm concerned about is the eventual maintenance fees that will be involved in upkeep, so those are the two issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else?
My name is Harold Hahn. I'm an iceberg, and I'm specifically concerned about access for vehicles, because to launch our ice boats, we had to go in here, drive here, park here, park cars that weren't going down, drive the ice boats with trailers across this field down to this road, then go down here and park the trailers in the woods and carry the boats in pieces, across the gully here, and then into here. So it is important that we are allowed to drive, four-wheel drive vehicles down there, because if it's just a footpath, we're not gonna be able to sail the stern steers on the bay.
So what I would say to that is, the public hearing is the subject of the acquisition itself. Planning for the park lands will be a subsequent action, and we'll be looking to get a lot of input on what will occur on those properties. What we have for you is a trail system that is almost complete. In fact, some of the pathways already exist. There are a couple of connections that will still need to occur. If you've been following along, years ago, we were working with Whittaker Land Trust on the Sawkill Trail Network. Just this weekend, during Trail Maintenance Day, they announced that yet another grant was funded where we'll be constructing the boardwalks. And so we will actually now have a complete trail system that'll go all the way from, well frankly, from Abrams Park now through Cookingham over to the town Rec Park, through to Rec Park West, completely through the undeveloped lands of the former Annandale Development Corp., or Lyndon Acres, as we refer to it, and make our way all the way over to Bard College. So what I'm trying to explain to you is that there'll be a couple of connections that will need to take place over the next couple of years, and we don't anticipate any problems with that, but just to know that it won't from day one, all of the trails be ready to go. And planning for the park itself is what we'll be looking to all of you, especially those of you in Barretown, those of you with interesting and important historical use of the property, how we can best accommodate all of those wonderful uses. Next up.
Put a different hat on as a former Whittaker Land Trust Board member and Duchess County Geographic Information Systems Coordinator for Planning Department and the Health Departments. Because of my dual role, I had a lot to do with the establishment of Father's Trail and the greenway easement that was placed on that property. It was a temporary easement that UTS decided not to renew, but that trail was there. But along with that, I did a lot of planning for the trail connection between UTS and Bard through those ravines. I'm sure that information still exists at Duchess County Planning. I would rely on, you know, I would suggest going to, try getting them involved as well. And, yeah, so that's, I had a lot to do with trails at planning, including the Parks and Trails website that is still up on the county, mapping all of the trails in the county. And I know I worked a lot with Red Hook on different trail projects here, so.
Right.
Good, thank you for continuing that.
We'll be calling you, Bob. Okay. Anyone else? Aaron?
Hi, everyone. I'm Erin Kinnan. I'm a longtime Red Hook resident, and I also am a employee at Bard College and a Vice President for Civic Engagement, and I just want to say that I think this is an amazing purchase on behalf of the town, and as someone who works really closely with members of the community, and as a member of the community, I think this is an amazing opportunity for us to think through really interesting programming for young people, lots of opportunities to get involved and get engaged, and I think it would be, I think it's a great place for us to be able to think about how we can program both for young people in the schools here, but also at Bard to make those connections. So I just really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Great. And we're thankful for Bard College that is entertaining all of this as part of their acquisition of the property. Okay. Anyone else? We have lots of written comments, which will be a part of the public record. We will not be taking any action tonight. We have a couple of things that we're still waiting on, referrals from Advisory Board, and a consistency determination from the Planning Board as relates to our local waterfront revitalization plan. So we will be scheduling a special meeting for next Tuesday where we will take action on this matter, but I think, given what we've heard, not only in person, but in writing, there was also a very nice gathering in Barretown. It seems like there was overwhelming support for this project, and so I would anticipate a favorable, I'm not speaking ahead of my board, I imagine we've done a lot of work. Earlier in 2023, when we first found out that the property was for sale, we were trying to put our heads together to see what would be a good outcome for this property, and I hope that the public finds that this is a real, real opportunity for us to set the future for Red Hook and Barretown and this wonderful property. So thank you all for coming tonight for the public hearing. We're not gonna close the public hearing, we're gonna continue it to next Tuesday, then the 19th, as a matter of course, at 7:35. And at this time, I'd like to make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor? Julia?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. And we now move on to our first item. Peter? Yeah, I'm sorry, you didn't want to speak during the public comment?
Peter Pinto, I've lived in Tivoli and Red Hook for 36 years. I think it's a great idea, but I really want the board to watch, though, as we're going forward with this, is safety in mind, especially now, we have, it's a good time, we have the fire department here. Do we have any small vehicles that are gonna be able to access that in emergencies? Say somebody has a heart attack on the trail or something, that we can get in there? Or phones, if we don't get good phone coverage on the whole trail, maybe we should be looking at maybe a phone station or something so on?
Thank you. I think there's a, yes, is the answer to your question. The fire departments have everything they need, quads, boat, they've been in the base for rescues before.
Is there any way to get in touch with them quick, if you cell phone this thing? They could have some kind of station?
A call station. I think a call station already exists on the property, actually. Okay. Let's dive right on into the agenda items. The first thing we want to discuss tonight is, as I mentioned earlier, the unfortunate news, and it really wasn't news, Duchess County didn't bring to our attention the fact that they intend to remove the public bus system from Tivoli and Red Hook. And I've made some phone calls, and in fact, we have with us tonight our county legislator, Chris Mann, and I would ask you, Chris, if you could be kind enough to come up and maybe just give us a brief description of what's being proposed. I'll put the map up for the folks at home. And thank you, thank you, folks.
Eric? You start?
Please.
So as part of the 2024 budget process, it was hinted at and mentioned a couple times offhand that there might be changes to the bus system, but we'll tell you soon. And then about two days before the budget was pushed through committee, they announced that they were making, creating some efficiencies, they decided to use the word efficiencies, and expanding service in some areas in the county, but reducing it in others. And essentially, their attitude of the current administration in Duchess is that, you know, the funding level of Duchess County Transit is, you know, we'll just keep it where it is, and we'll just move pieces around rather than invest more money in it. We requested, I requested more information about exactly what was gonna change and why and things like that. So what I did receive was that the line was gonna stop at Tops. Right now, it goes all the way up, up Route 9, across Market Street, then up 9G, Bard to Tivoli. Now, not every scheduled run goes through all that portion, but it's like maybe eight, 10 times a day each direction from down to the Kixi. My son actually took it, and my daughter was hoping to take it to DCC on some of the, on some, you know, down to college, you know, rather than, because it's a cheaper, if the schedule permits, it's cheaper than paying for gas, and the cars have a service or whatever, and I know there are people who use it. Now, this would be effective March 30th. There was no public, you know, no public outreach before the decisions were made. Now, they said they had surveys and they had a study, which I've requested a copy of the study, we still haven't provided it. Hopefully, it'll arrive before Thursday's public meeting, you know, right back down hall, so that I can take a look at it. But they basically were essentially saying that, you know, they're claiming that the ridership is too low, you know, that it's, you know, maybe two or three people per. And this is the information they gave, and you can see the red numbers along the bottom, Ridership Northern Tops, and you can see there's five, nine runs that go up into that area, and they're saying that the ridership in that direction averaged, you know, zero, zero, two and a half, four, three, you know, people on the bus during those periods. I don't have clarity on whether that means the people were on the bus at Tops and then continued, and those are the only ones they counted, or if they counted also people who maybe got on in the village and then got off in Tivoli, or vice versa. Again, I've asked for information about this, hopefully we'll have it by Thursday. And that's essentially where we're at right now. They have had four, they have had four informational sessions around the county, because again, there are changes being made in other parts of the county. Obviously, we're most focused on the ones in our area. And Thursday is the last one, and there was an email last Friday, and then four, four, you know, meetings this week, and then, you know, maybe they'll do some more, maybe they'll do flyers on the bus to let people know if they're gonna be there anymore. I don't know what they plan for more public outreach, but obviously, this is, you know, my preference, you know, is for more rural transit, not less. You know, firstly, I'd rather see more lines, you know, I'd like to see a line, you know, I know there's not a lot of draw for it, but that's, because it's not there now, right? I'd like to see a line from Village Red Hook to Millerton down 199, you know, and then people can decide, people will be able to choose, okay, I can live in my land, I can live in Pine Plains, and I can work in Millerton, or I can work in Red Hook. But without the lines there, they can't even make that an option. So that's, that's really what, where we're at right now. I'm happy to go.
Can we ask questions? Is this not the place?
Sure, sure, let's do, let's do the long meeting, but sure, let's take a few questions.
Maybe this isn't the appropriate. So I don't understand, is the bus company, is this a private company, public?
It's owned by Duchess County, Duchess County Transit.
Right, so isn't there legislation? I mean, you're always gonna have in any business, you know, like a loss leader, doesn't mean they're gonna have to provide the service, so.
Right, but the Duchess County Transit Department, owned by the government, Duchess County Government, these are decisions they've made, policy decisions they've made about what they, what they want to provide and what they don't want to provide. It's funded by the Congress, the tribe voted no on the budget for many reasons, including this reason, this year, but this is how they've decided to portion the funding, the small amount of funding that they've put into Duchess County Transit. Their explanation, you know, towards that end was, well, we only have so many drivers, and it's hard to find drivers, and, you know, that's a very typical. and it's hard to find drivers, and, you know, that that's a very typical, you know, if you're justifying something, I don't know how, you know, I know CDL licenses and CDL licensed people, it's difficult to find bus drivers, but, and many don't want to work for the government versus working in the private industry. But, you know, that was one of the things, one of the reasons that they will claim about not expanding service.
Those numbers that you gave, two and a half people per journey, is that true? Do you, do you know if those are averages over a particular period and how big a period it is?
I haven't personally received clarity on that. My understanding is that somebody at the administration said that that, those numbers are averages from 2019.
Yeah, because obviously, if you are only looking at a very small interval, and that happens to be over Christmas, you're going to get numbers that are not necessarily a true pressure of the use.
Yeah, and Bard colleges shared numbers about ridership of students that, you know, the numbers that have been provided were from 2022, 2023, but they, those numbers would seem to basically, you know, all the numbers up there added up, you know, would, might match that, you know, might match that number, but there have to be other people riding the bus beyond.
Is the idea that the Bard transportation system would deal with getting from Bard to Barrytown into where? Just as far as Red Hook, right? Or Rhinebeck? They wouldn't take you?
In other words, I'm talking about Bard students taking the public bus, the Dutchess County bus. I'm not, the Bard buses are.
No, I understand, but the idea is that for transportation, you could get from Bard as far as Rhinebeck?
Sure. I don't know how the Bard buses run, but those are not public access buses.
No, I think he's, what he's saying, that they meet in town. So you could take the Bard bus to town, and you could take the public bus all the way to Tibbly from Bard.
But the public bus actually does go through Bard campus and stop there as well, although not very, certainly not as frequently as the Bard.
Yeah, I mean, you're saying that it's really, you're talking about people from Bard to Tibbly.
Well, let Aaron clarify, because it's important to understand who can ride the Bard buses and who cannot. And so the public that is not either attending or working for Bard, do I have this correct? Aaron cannot utilize those and for understandable reasons.
Yeah, and the Bard bus really only does the loop around Red Hook. It doesn't, so, and the, and the, and the bus is, is going to stop at Tops and Rhinebeck, so the loop bus. And, and so it would mean all of us having to think about how anybody in our communities would get to the Tops. And I think it's, it's way beyond just, you know, we actually pay, the Bard campus pays for the Bard faculty, staff and students who ride the loop bus. And so we know what our numbers are based on what we're being charged, because they have to show a Bard ID. So the numbers are so different from what is being purported that it's, it means that if it's just, our ridership alone will have a huge impact, but I can only imagine, I got a couple of emails today from community members who were like, I ride the bus all the time, I have to, and I don't know what we're going to do. So this is, I think, you know, like more and more, we're sort of being frozen out of county services, and it's becoming a county service desert here. They don't really, they're not paying attention there. We've been on so many task forces of transportation over the years, there was no conversation that they're not even having a meeting here on, that they're having a meeting in Rhinebeck? That's.
No, this is, this is classic bad government. If we weren't here, they, they didn't even approach us. I only found out, Julia happened to mention it to me several weeks ago, and I said, well, I've heard nothing about it, I'll look into it. Then spoke to Chris, but also called down to Mark DeBald, and he said, well, yeah, actually, there is something happening, and I'll let you know, there's, there is some decrease in services being proposed. The fact that they didn't even reach out to us, didn't come to the community, you know, we often, when we sit here, we go through a very public process where people have, by law, and oftentimes, much more than that, an opportunity to speak with us and give us input. This is the opposite of this. They haven't even let us know what's happening. They haven't given us any of the data, explained to us how they came to this conclusion. And obviously, they don't seem willing to come to the community that they are removing the service from in order to hear from us, so.
And this is, this is an echo of what they did when they acquired the City for Tibbly bus service. And, you know, without a lot of public input down there, they changed the route south from under, and that community, obviously, you know, very different than our community in a lot of ways, you know, in a denser environment, but you have a lot of people who rely on the bus, you know, a lot more people rely on us than up here, but, you know, and of course, there's many more bus routes down there. But suddenly, you know, the bus stop that was there for 20 years, for the person who would, you know, come down with their walker or whatever and get on the bus to go shopping, suddenly, it was a block over, a two blocks over without public comment. And you think they would have learned something from that? This, that happened in 2017, 2016, 2017, when they, you know, merged with the City Bus company.
Robert, do you know how much of the town tax goes to that bus service?
There's no town tax. Your county taxes, which are substantially higher than your town taxes, fund that. And so you'll be funding it without receiving any of the services.
So can we get on legislation to, to change that? Can we go to on a, a legislative?
So that's the purpose of discussing it tonight, is to see what actions the town board is willing to take. My understanding is that they're redeploying resources so that they can bring folks downtown to new employers like Amazon, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, well, that's some new, yeah, that's one of their new lines, I think, that's going to support commercialize.
You got this big migration out to Red Hook anyway, so we should be getting more service.
So, yeah, so Peter, just one second. So while, while those added services might be good, certainly, this is really bad for our community. Of course, once again, it impacts the most vulnerable in our community, those who need and rely on public service. This is in complete contrast to what Elster County is doing, making their public transportation system free, increasing the service, and my understanding is the ridership is up dramatically.
Yeah, 40%.
40% in Elster County?
We proposed, we proposed that as well. And the price tag on that would have been something they estimated, something like, I think, if I remember correctly, one or 1.2 million. And, you know, they didn't, they just felt like it wasn't a priority.
Today, I drove from Williams, which is essentially Tops, 100 yards northern Tops. I was in Rhinebeck for business, and I just clocked it just to the Four Corners, it's less than six miles. You know, if they're suggesting that it costs them so much money to drive the bus at least to our, at least to the town center here, I find it.
Couple gallons of gas.
If that, and I, you know, it's, it's really, it's disingenuous. And I think we should send a strongly worded letter from the town board, I will make a motion that we do that, to the county executive to say, you know, that, you know, the way this whole process went through was not transparent. And the other issue is that, you know, the local hospital, Rhinebeck Hospital and Caremount, there's a, it's a hub of medical services. Most people go to their doctors down there, and there are plenty of people here who take the bus to go down, they're going to go to the Caremount, they go, you know, for physical therapy and Rhinebeck at the hospital or.
Patient services.
Yeah, and to not have basic public transportation, even if it's, even if they cut it down, but just not to have it at all during the day when people need to go to the doctor, is a public health issue. And I think it's, you know, it kind of reeks.
And so, you know, the town, the town board can, can make, take action, send a letter, participate, but it's important for everybody to know that this meeting in Rhinebeck is open to the public. So you can all go and say your piece there also and raise these very good points, and tell everybody you know to go there and raise these very good points, so that we can try to demonstrate the grounds well of support and needs for, and, you know, are essentially our right to those services.
So it's Rhinebeck, 6:00 PM, Rhinebeck Town Hall, yeah?
On Thursday.
Thursday?
Just Thursday.
When did the cuts go into effect?
March 30th.
And would you be able to?
6:00 PM.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
No.
Would the town be able to get an injunction from a judge to stop that as this was going on, or would it just happen? If we felt that it was something that was important and they continued to go forward, would we be able to stop it as the litigated?
You know.
I'm just curious.
It's something we have to.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but let us see what we can do. I think you, you hear that we have resolved to try to get this addressed. There are many ways to solve low ridership, including increasing service. Looking at the schedule, I see the schedule here, it doesn't seem to me to be ideal for having people come into our community by work hours and so on and so forth. Let us see what we can do, but also, we rely on public participation for these endeavors. It's really important for many in our community that they have access to it, students, people who need medical attention. You know, they hope to replace this by having a service where folks can call at least three days in advance and pay $6 one way for a particular thing. That just doesn't work for somebody who's trying to get by. And we're working so hard to make this community, a community that welcomes people of all incomes and you can participate regardless.
And it's very forceful when people who are actually going to lose the service come and explain the impact on them. So if you do know anyone, if you use the bus service, if you know people use the bus service for some of these points and that we're picking about today, it's really important to see if we can get them to attend this meeting on Thursday and speak up about the impact it will have on their life.
Is it feasible for the town, Pete, to provide its own bus service to?
Peter, we can look at all those things. We've got to unfortunately keep moving on. We've got literally nine or 10 more things on the agenda we have to tackle tonight, some of which are fairly extensive. But, but thank you all for participating in this discussion. We hope you'll participate in an effort to ask or demand that Dutchess County take a different tack. Okay. We have to do some administrative stuff, resolutions to approve IMA and fire contracts, water service agreements. But before we do any of that, we do have our engineers with us tonight, and since they are billable, we'll let them go first, engineers. We're talking about what would be involved if we were to desire to have a sewer district in our, in our traditional neighborhood district. Essentially, the district extends from here on down to the Holy Cow property, and then even further on the other side of Hannah Bird. And so, from Ty and Von, which one of you is Ty and which one of you is Von?
I'm Brandy Nelson, and I'm here with Erin Moore. We give you an update about a month ago. Erin joined us by phone, that, actually, no, she was texting me, because we thought there was a Zoom option. So anyway, I'm going to turn it over to Erin, because Erin has been handling the study, and this is kind of her area of expertise, but yeah, I mean, I think, Mr. Supervisor, you teed it up appropriately. It would, sewer service and the TND try and help spur economic development there and achieve the densities that the zoning anticipates.
Hi, so I'm Erin Moore from Ty and Von in the Rhinebeck office, focusing on water and wastewater. And what I'm going to do is touch upon what we're doing, briefly cover what Brandy presented the last time that she was here, and then talk about the rest of the study. So what, our task right now is to do a wastewater preliminary engineering report. And what this is, is identifying, is there a need for a sewer system? And if so needed, recommend the approach to address it. And so, just as Brandy mentioned, sometimes we're very focused on small parcels with onsite wastewater concerning public health and environmental risk. Certainly, while we're always conscious of that, in this case, what we're really looking at is the town spent a tremendous effort on identifying the traditional neighborhood development areas, and because of onsite wastewater, they can't be used appropriately. So the, the main focus of this report is how do we address that? And so indeed, there is a need for a sewer system. And so then, the tasks are analysis of the need, wastewater flow development, then develop wastewater system alternatives, and the report and opinion of probable cause. We are mid task four, so that's where we stand right now, we can move on. So just to, so we delineated the area as the traditional neighborhood district minus, there is a part of the residential TND that is the western portion, that already has sufficient wastewater coverage, so that's not included. And the first step then is based on that district delineation, how much flow is produced. So in the area where there is water service, so that's our blue line is our proposed sewer district delineation and the overlap of the green line, we have historical water usage data for that area. We had three years of data, and so the estimate is based on that. In the other portions of that recommended delineation, we don't have historical data, and then DEC regulations were used to identify what the anticipated flow for that area is, and that altogether sums to a total of 28,500 gallons per day. So that's the assumed existing flow for the area we're talking about. So how are we going to develop the future flows? So based, we're going to do that based upon the maximum usage in the TND zoning. It assumes, we skipped a page.
Did we?
Yes. Oh, we have like every other page right now.
Which side?
So you have to scan both sides?
Oh, I printed it as a P, I sent it as a PDF.
It must have been scanned and, you sent it as a PDF?
Yes. That's the page we're missing, yeah. I just wanted to go, I noticed we went through one page, and I thought, oh, we could skip that page in the interest of time, but.
Presentation is done.
How's that for a work?
There we go. Okay, we can move on.
Move on to that, nice area.
With that one, that's the one we skipped, sorry, we talked about the different districts part of it, so we can keep going. Just talked about this. Okay, future flows. So this was the matrix we used. Single family house, no additional flow, assumed it's going to stay a single family house. An existing commercial lot, but greater than 20% coverage already, assumed an additional 10% of flow. A vacant commercial or an existing commercial with less than 20% coverage. And there's quite a few of these where there's a very relatively small building and a pretty big lot associated with that. And so in that case, we used what the zoning maximum is, 12,000 square foot commercial per acre, and then at the DEC applied rate of 0.1 gallons per day per square foot. So that's how we addressed vacant commercial. And then vacant parcels in the area identified as the TND residential east. The, the TND development allowed for 300 total, 300 total additional residential units. 88 already exist over in that TND residential west, leaving 212 additional residential units. We assume two and a half bedrooms for that at 110 gallons per day per bedroom. And then the TND office industrial area, we assume 12 acreage of building coverage based on, again, the zoning, that's a 40 acre parcel, at, again, 0.1 gallons per day per square foot. So that was the matrix used for every parcel to identify what's the future flow. And that equals nearly 120,000 gallons per day. So, big difference, right? But we can continue on. So how are we going to deal with that flow? Two alternatives we have to consider. One, connection to the village. Two, construct a new wastewater sharing plan. Again, really important, we're doing this report, we're staying with the alternatives. Again, really important, we're doing this report, we're staying with the alternatives and looking at alternatives because we want this document to meet all the funding requirements. And they say we look at alternatives. And then what are, so what are the components of these alternatives? A collection system and a treatment system. Next one. So our collection system, it's going to be the same system we assume for both of those alternatives, which is a step system, septic tank, effluent pump system. The village uses this type of system. So a town connected, it would be the same system that they would require. But also, it's, there's good reasons to use step systems on small collection systems. Solids stay in the tank. We already have a good way to address those solids. Those are New York State DEC licensed septic haulers. Solids are one of the nuisance items at a wastewater treatment plant because they produce odors, they produce additional tanker traffic. So addressing them by pumping every three to seven years like you would do now, it is a great way to handle them. But meanwhile, and then it allows all the solids removed flow to be in smaller pipes, smaller pumps, and some more efficient and cheaper collection system. So theoretically, we could put a treatment system somewhere on the office industrial type parcel. And it would equal to the collection system, it's pretty much the same cost, no matter which direction we go. We go to the north through a force made up to the village wastewater treatment plant with this line shown in pink, the parcel where that treatment plant is is also outlined in pink. Or we go to the south and we end up at a theoretical parcel somewhere in the OI district. Again, just conceptual. Every green dot is one of the step systems, so a septic tank with a pump in it. And that's just a theoretical collection system layout, but it's what our costs are based on. But you're going to see numbers the same, that's because it's really 200 feet that way, 200 feet that way. So good for our purposes. So village, so again, how are we going to treat it? Connection at the village? Obviously, we're going to assume the same technology is currently used. There is no additional capacity at the village wastewater treatment plant, so the expansion's got to assume all of the town flows, that 120,000 gallons per day. A flow meter, just for us, want to confirm it's what the flows are we'd be sending to that plant. And then the same components they have, biological treatment, tertiary filtration system, UV disinfection, a little sledge holding tank, and of course, emergency power. And this is just a theoretical layout again of where, what the treatment plant looks like and how there is sufficient site, size of the site. To take this the next step further, it's going to involve some good substantial coordination with the engineers representing the village. Because I think initially, many, back when they originally did the map planner report, they'd said the theoretical capacity of the site total was 20,000, 200,000 gallons per day. But definitely the village is revisiting that to see really how many treatment components they, for their own interests as well, can fit on that site. So then the alternate that we're looking at is constructing a new town wastewater treatment plant, again, sort of somewhere in, for the sake of this analysis, in the office industrial area. Because there is a tributary of Rhinebeck Hills, so that makes sense. And again, components would be a flow meter, a biological treatment, filtration treatment system, UV disinfection, and emergency power. So just some examples of what those systems look like from a nearby system in Hyde Park. So what's the cost? What we did was take collection system costs, again, same piping, just two different directions, same cost, treatment system costs, total cost, and then escalated it to 2026. Because that's really when this would be built. $8 million versus approaching $12 million. So you can see at my green check mark there, we definitely are looking at the connection to the village wastewater treatment plant as the far more reasonable cost to pursue. However, when we talk about, and this is the important consideration, we don't want to go too small, but we definitely don't want to go too big. If we assume we built that, and then right now we have our users, we'd be spreading how we're going to assume we're going to use the same methodology as the village. Their 150 gallons per day is one, per one unit of cost, so one EDU, which is called an equivalent dwelling unit. If we do that math at our 28,500 gallons per day, we end up at a cost of $2,538. That'd be annually for a single-family or a really small commercial user. If you use more than that on average, it's going to be multiples of that $2,538 a year. This also assumes 125% rate, which is similar to the water district, for operation and maintenance. It does not assume a similar surcharge on the capital cost because my thought is those would be solely borne by the town, but that's something we'd have to discuss with the village. Also, the collection system costs, while it's the full capacity, it doesn't assume that we're just putting random septic tanks on vacant parcels. So those costs are not included in the collection system. So that's a lot, as I said. It puts a big burden on the users to finance this additional capacity. Or the other option would be to charge vacant parcel owners for the potential capacity of their parcel, but that would be really substantial. So with this big difference between 28,500 and 120,000 gallons per day, we'd like to consume, you know, consider a phased approach. And so that's going to balance our existing flows with the growing capacity needs. So this is an option. I'm just going to talk about phase one and phase four, but this is a way to consider how we could do phasing. So first phase, 50,000 gallons per day. That's very similar to what the village's increase to their plant was, and it provides for a 75% increase over the existing flows. Keeping in mind, half, more than half of those existing flows are based on the DEC numbers, which are definitely conservative compared to the water usage. And so there's definitely good ways to sort of incrementally design and assume we can step up as we develop the rest of the areas that right now are vacant. So looking at that phase one, 50,000 gallons per day, we've got a new cost estimate on our next page. So if we just go to our escalated project cost and now our current EDUs, we end up at about 1,661 dollars for that single EDU number. And that's with no grants or support, same methodology. Now the, currently in the village, it's 1,027. So now we're coming down into the ballpark of a similar cost per EDU. So I think my math was about 45% grant coverage, and we are very, very, very similar to what the village's cost per EDU is. So this phased approach, I think, really is something we've got to strongly consider to make it affordable, then also assume, then also have a path forward to grow the system as additional needs happen. And we can see that chart right here sort of further emphasizing this. If we do a 50,000 gallon per day system, those users aren't overwhelmed by cost. But the more capacity we build in without, you know, if we could wave a magic wand and development occurred, then there'd be more, you know, a way to spread the love. But without that, it really becomes expensive for the base users in the system.
Quick question. When you were calculating the 119.
Yes.
Did you take, does that include like, for example, where the Ross property is, where the fire was?
Yes.
When you were on the planning board, they had a proposed, which they can't do currently because of septic issues, like that was a mixed-use project with residential and commercial. Can't remember how many units, but I would hope that your calculation would have included that.
So we have 75% growth, but when we talk about like the vacant parcels and Ross, I called it the fire parcel.
Yeah, that's what I called it.
Yeah, we were here when that happened to, you know, we, I said, that's definitely one we want to make sure is supported in that growth. So that would be part of what we are assuming would happen in that first phase. And phase one would be that parcel. So that's just emphasizing, we just have to find that right balance of capacity versus. So this is where we are. We've got, the preliminary engineering report is very close to being complete. We're anticipating it, providing it to the town the week of December 18th, so just a couple of weeks. Then we want to meet, get any initial comments, and then of course facilitate a meeting with the village to talk more about. We've been very helpful. They've provided us anything we've asked for as far as data, so we can progress this. We want to confirm an approach and the anticipated user fee approach that we're assuming based on water, but want to get some buy-in from that. Then we can finalize our report, submit it to DEC and Dutchess County for comments, and then be ready to use it for grant funding opportunities, which will start to roll out in the summer and the spring. When the town is ready to, some of those grant opportunities require the town to be through district formation. So the next steps to progress that are, the PER gets downscaled to this very succinct document. What are we doing? Where's it going? How much does it cost? How much are the user fee per parcel? And then there's the secret process. Specifically, collection system might impact archaeological sensitive areas and if there's any environmental review required. And then it's the legal staff, the envi, don't you enjoy this part? Sorry. The legal district formation and the things required as part of that. And that application goes to the state comptroller for approval. And that moves on to design and construction. So that's, that's where we are, done hopefully quickly.
Okay. Very good. We definitely want to advance the feasibility of having sewer. One of the things we always leave out is that these individual septic systems are on top of our aquifer. And oftentimes we have, in fact, recently we've heard folks wondering, you know, they've been smelling something over in a particular neighborhood and they're thinking it's related to the central sewer and in fact, it may be an individual failed septic. And that's not what we want to hear.
No.
When it comes to either neighborhood quality of life and certainly for the water underneath. So very good. Any questions, Julia?
Yeah, thank you. This was really helpful and I appreciate the kind of periodic, you know, sort of like incremental progress reports as we go through. Clearly, the phased approach makes sense based on the, you know, the numbers that you've brought. You know, as you were starting out, I was thinking, oh, well, I mean, I'm always a proponent of not underbuilding. And I really like the idea that it is, you know, you pre-design an expandable system and build it out as the demand materializes. I guess I'm curious, and probably it's kind of unavoidable, but you know, to what extent are there increased costs necessarily built into that of mobilizing construction and, you know, like efficiencies that you don't get to take advantage of because it's done in those phases?
Absolutely. Remobilization, there is a certain economy of scale, but it's really hard to capture that from, you know, from a cost estimating perception other than like mold and demo. Because, you know, to estimate this, we used, so what did we use? We used the bid documents from the village of Red Hook. Again, they were very generous in sharing any information we asked for. So while we escalated and included factors on top of that, we used real recent costs. So those are from, you know, the end of construction was in 2020, beginning of this year. So, so from a real data perspective, that's geographically appropriate and can not do much better. And they were still in a time period where we were, you know, in that pretty aggressive bidding environment. So, but in general, to get, we've got 20% contingency on this, which we think is appropriate for those numbers in this stage. So there's a lot of healthy, we wouldn't want to be low here. We want everyone to understand the cost and how it might impact their parcels. So in the report, any additional comments? So on the approach to future flows, just get them back to me or Brandy. You're going to have the draft report soon. What we'll do, I haven't received any also comments from the board from the last presentation of, is there any strange parcel that isn't in the TND but should have been in the district? If there's any thoughts on that. Otherwise, I'm going to number all the parcels and have a table right in there, based on what, how we've estimated their flow, what's the dollar value going to be for this approach? And that's going to be a good idea for parcels to see what is the annual cost with no, assuming no grant support. And I think that will really give us a good, give the board a good idea of what we're talking about, what we're looking at, and if we're ready to move on to the next stage.
We have a question regarding potential grant support. So what is the realistic opportunity for that, given that the village of Tibbely is going through the same thing that is probably going to apply for the same sources? That there's, you know, that wouldn't we be competing against each other as opposed to a lot of money for each place or something?
Very different.
Yeah, you're going to go get the same grant sources.
No, it's a very different situation because they're existing in your economic development.
Yeah, I attended a Zoom, I guess you'd call it training or info session that the state did, at least three different state agencies, and it was about the various different funding sources. There were some I never even knew existed, and some were really specifically for the construction, some were, you know, some were for operating, they have different, there's different places that money come from. It's not just like the Wia grant, I mean, there's a whole bunch of them actually. There's basically two silos, and within each one, there's multiple sources. So while, yeah, you might be competing on some, if you're building from the ground up, which is what, this is what's being proposed, you wouldn't be competing with them because they already built theirs. You know, I was kind of shocked at just how much money there really is.
Well, there, I mean, yes, they're essentially going to build a brand-new plant.
But if I, if I may, so Tibbely right now, the plant, the plant?
Is failing.
Yes. Get out of here. It's, it's in trouble officially with the DEC. And once that happens, you know, it's sort of a negative feedback loop, but then you score really high because you are formally in trouble. No one wants to be formally in trouble, right? That's not, that's not the goal of anyone. So, so the town is not formally in trouble. Additionally, some of the sources that Tibbely is going to pursue, the water quality improvement, we have the document, you know, what Robert mentioned is a concern that they're actually undocumented, failing septic systems impacting well or surface water quality, that is extremely challenging. There's other parts of Dutchess or Columbia County where houses are built really tight around a lake, let's say. I'm not going to name names, but really tight around a lake, so much so tight that definitely septic has impaired that lake, and then that lake is formally an impaired water body documented by DEC. That's a situation where failing septic, clearly water quality impact that's been documented and is official. I don't think we want that problem, but it does make you score higher. So what are we going to look at? And definitely the, while Wia was one of the sources for the village, I think USDA rule development is an excellent source that we should be pursuing, which looks a little more comprehensively at the different motivations for doing this system, especially their community facilities grants. So that's the place we need to be oriented, is a little less towards water quality and a little more towards the economic development resources.
Thank you.
Any thoughts on the infamous 21 properties not served in the village in between us? And how that might impact and which options we pursue?
In my opinion, and again, this would be, this would be up to sit down at the table and discuss. I really would feel from the town's best interest, you want to go all the way to the plant and put a flow meter at the end. Now, when you're doing that construction, could we put two pipes in the ground? And so then if the village wants to connect the rest of those folks, that would make complete sense. And so then, if the village wants to connect the rest of those folks, that would make complete sense. But I think it's in the town's best interest to be able to say, okay, we're at the plant, and this is how much flow the town's contributing, to document that and document the capacity you're using. So while your pipe, as shown, would pass all of those parcels, the difference is like 100 feet to go to where their force main is compared, and then to turn the corner and go to the plant. When we're talking about these dollar values, that's an irrelevant value. So get there, put a flow meter there, you know how much you're sending to that plant. And that's, I wouldn't want to see you tie in, especially given the low dollar value that'd be. But while you're constructing it, if, to collect the rest of their residents that's missed, it seems like there would definitely be some good collaborative effort that could be done. And then that could see in to where their force main turns. But that's, that's my thought on that. You want to know how much you're sending.
Yeah. So will our users. Very good. Well, we want to keep this moving.
Yep. But any questions?
Well, not just this meeting, but the project.
Oh, no, we're moving. We're going to have a document by us, it's pretty close. But, and then we look forward to meeting and getting comments, so.
Thank you, Beau.
Thank you.
Yeah, and really, in the term of the district, if you want us to send you that map, just like as a standalone document, just to look at, I think that was a conversation we had, was are we specifying the area appropriately? Are there adjacent outlined parcels you guys really think need to be included? So maybe we can just shoot that over to you tomorrow and you guys can.
I think that's more before we move into the hollowing ceiling.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. Safe travels. Okay. Let me just start, sure. Let's jump back. We have with us tonight, all the way from the town of Rhinebeck in one case, yeah? Archtop Fiber is here to talk to us about what they are proposing to do in this area of the Hudson Valley. Gentlemen, why don't you come up and introduce yourselves while I scroll around and try and find.
Hi. Just surprised to be able to see you again. George, thank you. My name is Sean Bakai, I'm one of the founders of Archtop Fiber, and to be as brief as I can, here in the late hour, we are a newly formed internet provider in the Hudson Valley. We are based out of Kingston, New York, from the first tenant for the Hyde Park, the old I B, abandoned I B facility. We've just passed 50 employees. We are constructing roughly 3,000 miles of state-of-the-art fiber optics from the Albany southern suburbs, all the way down, up and down both sides of the Hudson River, to all of the river towns, and then across the Hudson Valley to the Delaware River and down into New Jersey, and then over to the Berkshires and some of those. So it's about a $300 million privately funded project. We are in construction now, we're designing here, we are, we actually just completed our agreement with Rhinebeck Village this evening, right before this. So it's been a long evening, as yours has as well. We have some maps, we have some descriptive materials. It has been a long, it was over a year since we first spoke, Mr. Superser, and the anticipated delays with permitting on central Hudson Gas and Electric pole infrastructure has been significantly worse than we even anticipated, and we had relatively low expectations. It is, we have some applications that are as much as a year old. We have well over $2 million in application and engineering fees sitting within, and they are in transit. Is I guess how I would describe it. We are pivoting in some areas to a different technology for deployment. We'd like to talk a little bit about that here. We have some materials to show, to show you. But in short, it is a competitive internet service. It is fully fiber optic based. It is 10 gigabit, up to 10 gigabit speed, so it's what you can get in downtown Seattle, you can't get in New York City now. It's called X G S Pond. We'll be offering fiber internet as well as phone. It's competitive to, you know, it's about 10 times as fast and about half the price of what you currently receive with Spectrum here. It's a sort of a three-legged stool of deployment. We have purchased the Germantown Telephone Company from the Bonsack family, who are old friends of mine, I live in Rhinebeck, as is Tom, who is a sort of my colleague here. The Hancock Telephone Company over the Delaware River, the Warwick Valley Telephone Company, and we are in the process of upgrading all three of those older, 100-year-old phone companies to this new fiber optic card. In addition to that, we are using our own investment. It is largely public retirement fund investors in our company, so it's long-term infrastructure investment to build out the denser areas, including this map that we have here, if I'm allowed to hand that out. And then there is sort of a third leg of the stool that we call it. And I'd like to advise that our business plan does not require this third leg at all, but it is inevitable that there is about $42.5 billion in public broadband infrastructure spending that's going to be spent across the country. 1.6 billion roughly in the state of New York through the Connect All program. We looked at that and said, where our R O I, or return on investment, in the denser areas is something we are investing 100% of our own infrastructure. There is an opportunity to push out to less dense areas through partnering with this Connect All program. But we didn't want to take on the role of deciding where that should be entirely on our own. So we could, but we didn't, we thought, partner. So we have these M O Us, we call them, with all of the counties, about, I guess, close to 25 of them now. And they're really simple, non-exclusive documents, but the cost of doing all the engineering for those applications for public funding, identifying where eligible locations that don't have service or have substandard service exists, is expensive. And we didn't want to embark upon that without some buy-in from the local municipalities. And these agreements are simple. They are cancelable at any time by either party. There is no, absolutely incapable of there being any financial obligation for the municipality. But they're basically saying, internet's really important, there's a ton of money coming down the pipe. The town of Red Hook, or any other of these, you know, municipalities, should get all that they deserve of this money and more. And we would like to possibly partner with Archtop to seek that money through a joint application. That application would be engineered, funded, the 25% matching requirements would be 100% on us. And it would basically allow the town to look at our map and say, hey, cool, you're getting about 95% of the town, but there's some areas you may have missed. And those areas, we would show you, we actually have the studies done already on these eligible funds. So why don't we get together and put in an application to go get these other fewer homes that you didn't reach? And we have those, we have with Dutchess County already. So in reality, it's somewhat redundant at this point, because we could do all of Dutchess County just under the auspices of that agreement. But we've been doing this for more than 30 years in some of the most difficult areas of the world. We've built all of Montana, all of Wyoming, about a third of Colorado. We built Santiago, Chile, to Tierra del Fuego. We built Warsaw, cracked out Poland after the wall fell. And the company was called Brezlin Communications at the time. Mr. Brezlin passed away in 2009, and we were his senior management team. The company sold, it is now actually part of Charter Spectrum. And we decided to do this again, and have since done things together, that company was sold in 2009. I personally ran a project where we built 4,000 miles of fiber between Corning, New York, and the Pennsylvania border. And again, I'm a New Yorker, born and raised, and, you know, and local. Here, we are, as I said, a completely local company. We just passed 50 employees on our way to about 100 in that facility. Almost entirely local hires. Some people sort of trafficked in, but, but we, so the furthest you would call if you had a problem with our service would be our folks in Kingston. It's really a, frankly, a somewhat extraordinary situation, because it is a huge private investment to bring in a competitive provider. It's sort of man of heaven from a, you know, from a market perspective, because it's, again, 10 times the speed. It's extraordinarily green. We use, our plant is all dielectric, it's fiber optic, shooting sort of lasers down very, very small lengths. We actually have some of that fiber to show you. And this other technology, which pivoting away, it's more expensive to deploy, but we just simply can't wait on these permits anymore. So we have developed the technology, we're actually deploying it in Sawardes and Kingston right now. It's called micro trenching. And we cut a very, very narrow slot in the roads, about one inch wide, about 12 inches deep. We do about 1,500 feet a day. We only cut what we can fill that day. You can drive over it as we're cutting it, and we flow, we put flowable fill back in. Google is using this throughout the entire state of Arizona and the entire state of Utah right now. They have colder winters and warmer summers than we do. It's in the monolith of the roadbed. There is no risk to the town. If you guys come and mill a road and it touches our network, the obligation to repair it is upon us. We warranty roads for five years through whatever vehicle you find comfortable. So if by some, now again, this is fairly well-worn technology in other areas, New York has been slow to adopt it. The D O T, as you know, is almost as recalcitrant as, as Central Hudson Gas and Electric we are. Michelle Hinchey is working on a bill with us, or would require the D O T to consider this. But right now, we're just talking about county and town and village roads to do this. It allows us to deploy much faster without paying the, or frankly, the deferred maintenance at Central Hudson Gas and Electric, which is the situation we're in. They have not kept up with their infrastructure payments. They see us coming and say, hot dog, people, lots of money, and you pay for this pole to be replaced. And so in fighting over who should pay for what, it just drags this process out. We frankly thought it was about an 18-month project about a year ago. And as you know, we haven't put a stitch of it up in your township yet. We have a state authority to do so, or a C L E C, or competitive local exchange carrier by classification of the Department of Public Service, which gives us certificates of public conveyance and need to get into the right of way, get into pole attachment agreements with utilities, or, or dig. We could dig in the green space, you know, again, under that authority. Historically, for 30 years, we partner with our local communities, we always do. We're involved in the chambers, we go to your chambers. We just find that we do much, much better, we're more successful when we have the full buy-in of the communities within, which is where Bill Brezlin always used to say, take care of your communities, they take care of you. And we have done that throughout our careers. This is, as we are getting significantly grayer, this is the last hurrah for us as a management team, and we chose the Hudson Valley because we love it. One of my partners is in Wyndham, Amen Rhinebeck, Tom's a lifelong Rhinebeck resident, and another is in Monroe. And this is just a place we wanted to do it at this point, which is why we're here. And so we'd like you to consider the M O U. As I said, it's not anything binding, it's certainly not essential, given the fact that we already have Dutchess County. What it does is it gives you a stakeholder status in whatever we plan with regard to the projects. And we would communicate on a regular basis with you on what the engineering costs that we have incurred find in terms of what locations, how much money would ultimately be available to expand that plant to anywhere where it doesn't contemplate right now. And right now, that contemplates all the denser areas within the township. It's fairly ubiquitous, but it is not 100% so.
And is that contemplating using this microtension technology on all that, or no?
No. That is, a significant portion of that is aerial. We are thinking in the sort of town and village roads in downtowns, which are particularly difficult because the pole are crowded with lots of other joint affactors and things like that.
And then just one, so one quick question, on your map, you have the village of Tibbely cut out. You don't have the village of Red Hook cut out, so are you?
We're there too.
It was frankly, you know, as we were walking out of the office late for this. Looked at that and said, well, why the heck did we cut out Tibbely?
And those abilities. So you would not be utilizing state roads? Well, that's, that's interesting.
We will be doing aerial.
Aerial on all of those? So you just go straight up nine and then you'll branch off of there? I don't think there are nine chains.
We are in the process of constructing a hub site. We create, it's, I think of it as sort of an artery, a capillary, sort of architectural, we create hub sites every 20 kilometers or so. We're building one in Rhinebeck now, which will serve all the way up to Germantown. So the backbone that will serve this area is being constructed right now. We're just talking about the distribution plan within the township.
Which is something to keep in mind, this size fiber can handle over 9,000 customers. So that's what makes this type of architecture and this technology really something, you know, special that we can deploy. And the only thing else I would add is on the M O U that we're trying to, you know, propose here is, I heard tonight on how well Dutchess County looks out for you guys. This gives us an opportunity for you to, you know, have a say in what, you know, where we work as a partnership. So just something to keep in mind, I don't, there's no real commitment with it, but it's just kind of a partnership that you can step into or out of as needed.
It's not exclusive either. If our competitor were to come in and offer and want to do one, you know, me personally, I would say, where the heck have you been for 10 years? But, but I, you could enter into a similar, both, or neither, frankly. It's, you know, the concept is entirely in your hands. We would like, we're here offering to be much more communicative than we have been over the past year in what our plans are, as those plans are starting to heat up and we're starting to do deployment now. And frankly, as that funding mechanism becomes clearer in its rules. So it's time to start putting our ducks in a row.
So where are you with respect to Rhinebeck right now? I think the village is the one that you've already come to some agreement with, or just about?
Nope, we have passed this evening. We also passed a similar agreement in the city of Kingston and the level of Sawardes. We are actually cutting streets in Sawardes right now. So you can actually physically see, we actually have photographs of that process in taking place. We are starting in the city of Kingston as well. And it's roughly, we are building approximately 3,000 miles total of fiber. About 20% of that will be generally underground, and about half of that underground will be microtrenching. So you can talk about, it's about 300 total miles of microtrenching, mostly in downtown Catskill, downtown Hudson, downtown Rhinebeck. Downtown Red Hook, you know, and, you know, it's fairly logical.
Where's your hub that you said you're building in Rhinebeck? Where's that located?
187 East Market Street? Just on the border of the village and the town, but on the village, you know, the office park there. So, and it's exciting, it's actually getting put into position on Thursday morning. So I think, you know, that's why the timing is perfect for us to reach out to you guys and get this dialogue started. Because we're, we're super excited, especially as Rhinebeck residents, I can't wait for the service to come to my house.
So just a question, you know, you showed the trenching here. So when someone, if someone wants to hook up their home or their business, then do you enter into an Eastman or something with them? Or from the street to their house?
No, it's a very similar relationship as you would have with your incumbent phone or cable company now. Although we don't put those tall, green pedestals all over the place that you see. Everything we do is at ground level, there, you'll see them in those photographs, we call them flower pots. They're sort of upside down, plastic PVC containers where the splicing mechanism goes in there. Then, and that sort of doglegs off of the road into the green space next to the road. And then when someone elects to have service, we come in, do a splice there, and run what we call a laboratory plow. Sort of like a scissor device that runs up the turf. And we put that very narrow conduit that you see with a, what we call. And we put that very narrow conduit that you see with a, what we call a drop fiber, which is just a, you know, that's a 288-count fiber. We're putting a four or six-count fiber into your home, which is much smaller than your pinky. It's, you know, it's tiny. And it sort of lifts your saw, goes down about 10 or 12 inches. It gets pressed back down. You almost can't see it. What we do, we bring that up to the side of the house and put, you'll find in our industry, we give everything an acronym. We put a NID, NID, on the side of the house, which is a small plastic box. From there, it goes into the house to an ONT, an optical phone network termination device. And from there, you get your service with Wi-Fi around the house. And again, it's multi-gig. And it's true binary. It's same speeds up and down. And through the micro trenching agreement, we have provided as an incentive to the town and a sort of a bother, sort of a compensation for bother, a blanket 20% discount to any service the township or the municipality chooses to elect. It's become extremely popular with law enforcement. The photographs and the videos that they have to upload to the state agencies are huge files. And the current fast download speeds with slow upload speeds of their current services are inadequate to the job. And so our service will allow that to happen instantaneously. So, you know, as far as that, and we are offering a 30 cent per foot right-of-way fee just to make sure that, you know, we're going to be working with your DPS. We know that is a distraction. That is a fraction of what your, I don't know what your trenching fees are, but your normal trenchers will cut a 36-inch wide by 48-inch deep trench that's open for months. Where in and out in the same day is one inch wide by 12 inches deep. So proportionally, it's not even a proportional amount of money, but 30 cents is something that we have offered the city of Kingston, Rhinebeck, and we would offer that here as well, just to compensate your DPS for the fact that they have to look at our paperwork and come out and see what we are doing and make sure that, of course, if we are doing something that I'm like, we would correct.
And then just, just the pictures quickly, you know, it looked like you're going down, close to the side of the road. So do you have to do it on both sides of the road? If there's houses or facilities on both sides or...
No. There are different methodologies.
Okay.
We choose to go down one side. And how far we go into the road is based on a couple of different things. Sometimes it's actually the DPS or the municipality themselves will choose it. Sometimes if there's a concrete curve, we will cut the seam between the curve and the blacktop. Other times, if there's a fog line, a white stripe, we will cut down the center of the fog line and then replace the fog line. So it really just disappears. There are lots of different things. But what we do is as we...
It's really just one cut per road?
One cut with cross-cuts periodically to serve the homes on the other side.
Okay. And so what you're considering right now is some percentage of homes and businesses could be served relatively quickly with the micro trenching, trenching in the more urban areas of our rural area. And then the outlying areas would still have to wait for you to finish the arguments with Central Hudson because you need the poles.
Yeah. The good news is in those outlying areas, the process, there's fewer, there's a less intense use on those poles. So the permits tend to be easier and cheaper for us. Again, it's the downtown areas that Donnie Brook has really...
Except for Central Hudson. Yeah. Have your problems with the permits for Central Hudson.
Yeah, but in the area, we're just saying even with Central Hudson, it's easier in the more rural areas.
Okay. What's a realistic timeframe for build-out? Your, your thinking?
I would refer you to my first comment and just say, "Don't listen to what I said a year ago" and to project that from, from this point. We are beginning fielding work in this area right now. So you will start seeing our people out on the streets with vests. And we're using a system called LIDAR, which, you know, so you'll see our orange and white trucks. And that's just us pulling engineering data, thousands and thousands of points of data, compiling that into our engineering diagrams. That is happening now. I would say the entire project, and I'll tell you, we have a project plan that is 12 to 18 months down the road. So...
When you say the project, are you talking about our municipality, talking about Rhinebeck to Red Hook to over the purple, what is...
I'm talking 3,000 miles in about 18 months. And I've done 40, more than 4,000 miles in the state of New York in a similar time period. So...
Okay.
It's not a combined plan.
And what's the timeframe for accessing the funding? So if we were to join with you and make application then?
Josh Bradbacher runs the Empire State Development Broadband Fund, the Connect All program, just released a timeline. The state has done their sort of pre-planning and has, has just released another map identifying the locations from which we have done. But it is 2025 when the application, early 2025 when the applications will be due. Grant this awards and disbursement agreements will be sort of central, center of 2025 to end. And the construction will begin that year, finish in 2026. So it is a long, much longer than frankly ought to be in my opinion. This money was awarded as part of the Reconstruction Act well over a year ago. It should have been deployed by now. But wheels have gone right slowly.
So more questions before we let them go? I mean, the, the only thing that is going to nag at me is to understand when, when you do build in the community, what your maintenance staffing looks like. Because that, that is the one thing that, you know, we see with the larger law lines or corporations like Charter is that they do have, there are folks out there on the streets fairly frequently.
I would say, you know, we, as I said, just passed 50 on our way to hundreds. And I could say as a, they have purchased our other plants. And to a municipality, there isn't a single municipality that thinks their current servicing and maintaining of the network holds a shadow of a candle to our priority. We, you have my cell phone number. I'm a founder of the company and I live down the road. It's a fundamental profound difference than a public company with corporate offices in Stanford, Connecticut.
But you, you will be staffing up appropriately as you like.
No, absolutely not. We are already burning a half a million dollars every two weeks in payroll for maintenance staff for a plant that we couldn't build because of the delays. So we have already, we have $27 million of the fiber sitting in a yard in Kingston. We have already put our money where our mouth is and we continue to do so. It's just who we are. And I'd say judge us by what we do, not by what I say here. Or by all means, call some of the municipal, you know, that we have served in the past and ask them how President Communication was in office as a, and our old CEO is our CEO here and dear friend and partner Jeff, who lives in Wyndham, I'm here. Again, you can have his cell phone number as well. So we're just, we're local. And that's just a, it's a different paradigm. It's a supervisor.
Okay, good. Any other questions before we let them go? We get on to our light theme meeting. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for your patience tonight.
And any questions going forward, if you forgot to ask one, please by all means, call. Thank you very much.
All right. Moving right along, we are going to jump back if we could. Folks, let's go to our amended IMAs and fire contract. Why does technology cooperate? So we have both the IMAs and the resolution. Deanna, would you happen to know, would the resolution number...
91.
And that's the resolution for the Fire Protection District?
Yeah.
Which is second resolution? Jeff, I'm sorry.
Is there just one resolution?
Well, I just want to make sure we're both in here. There should, there should be two resolutions in the package.
Well, essentially what happened was she duplicated the one resolution and had it in twice.
Well, hang on a minute. Let me see if I have the page.
Authorizing execution. I have the LoSa.
Right, the agreement, but...
In the packet.
In the packet?
No, we have the amendments.
You have the amendments.
That's what I meant, yeah.
So we have, we have...
I have both.
No, is this, is this one you have?
This one and then this one.
Where are you seeing it?
So it's behind. Keep going back. It's like six documents behind.
Are you looking for this one, Chris, on the screen?
Yep, that's what I'm looking for.
That's what I thought.
Oh, it's behind another one.
I'm trying to...
Oh, that's very odd.
See if you all are aware.
No, I see it.
Okay.
It's just attached to the wrong one. Okay. All right. Sorry.
Resolution number 91 is authorizing the execution of amendment to the LoSa in municipal agreement. And it's to reflect the change as indicated by the public referendum, supporting the increase in the annual contribution for eligible law tiers. And I will happily move resolution number 91 with gratitude for you town board members for making this happen. Would use your second though.
I'll second.
Any, any comments? Not all in favor. Dr. Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Don Hamel, myself. We have amended water services agreement. Our annual renewal period has expired. Oh, sorry.
No, I'm sorry. You had this LoSa.
Yeah, we did the LoSa.
No, you did the fire services one, I thought. I thought you were doing the fire services amendment.
Well, I did the LoSa one, sorry. Yeah.
You do?
That was on the screen. Let's do the fire services thing. Find what order it's in.
You did do this one first.
Ooh la la.
Yeah. So that's 91. Oh, I'm missing a page two. I think that's the problem. So... Excuse us.
All right.
It was the first thing on the list there.
Resolution number 92, approving the amendment number one to both the town of Red Hook Fire Protection District Fire Service Agreement, which is complete the town and the village of Red Hook in the area of fire, as well as the amendment to the fire protection agreement between Red Hook and the village of Tibbely for 2023 and 2024. And again, to reflect the change as necessary by the public referendum and ISO moves. Is there, thank you. All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
William? You are jumping around. We're going back to water. You don't get busy driving down. Wait. Let's scroll. Here's the amendment. I think I have to print out for you all the resolution. I don't know if it's on...
It's in the packet.
It is in the packet.
Yep.
Here we go. 93.
There you go.
Essentially, our water service operational agreement is by virtue of passing this, resolution will extend at the current price, the system operation. C3MD is performing the services both for the town and the village water system. Who would like to please onto the water floor?
I will make that motion.
Okay. Who would like to second that resolution?
I'll second.
Thank you, Julia. All in favor, Christine?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay. We're plugging away. I don't think we've resolved any details related to the next year's Dutchess County SPCA, the Dog Control and Housing Services Agreement. I think I've given you a resolution that wasn't in the packet, approving both the Dog Control and Housing Services Agreement. I thought that did not make the packet or something. So let's see. This is 94. Billy, you're liaison to the...
So moved.
Okay. All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Myself, aye. But thanks to you and Chris Shaw for working on this.
Thanks, we got it.
90. Okay, so we've done our TND. We had our RSHF fiber.
This is second.
Uh, the second resolution, right? Well, our resolution has Dog Control and Housing Services Agreement. So we have two agreements, yep, all in one resolution, right?
Well, we have one agreement. And now, this is an agreement that covers both, right?
Right. We are moving to the exciting world of SICER. At last we left, we did a review of Park One. This is as it relates to the potential acquisition of park lands, conservation movement and public access trails. We have prepared for us a consistency determination document. I hope you've had a chance to review it. Any questions by our plan, green plan, Ted King? The assessment form, again, this is an acquisition project. It's important for folks to remember that when the lands are developed for the uses that are described, that development, whether it's trails or parking or kiosks, all of that will be included in a separate environmental review. The policies that are necessary to be reviewed under the LWRP are listed here. Encouraging growth of tourism, open space protection, references to various documents. Tell me if you have any questions or comments. Protect, protecting a lot of the areas that are significant for both the fish and other wildlife habitat. Obviously, protecting in and around the bays is important to that. Flooding and erosion, this is not a construction project. So it's just acquisition and preservation. And so therefore, any construction would be reviewed at another time. Public access, obviously, this is very supportive. We've mentioned the public purposes for this project, which include permanent public access. You heard tonight about temporary access to some of the trails. This would codify that going forward. Progression and historic. It's very nice of one to give us some background there. Teddy Roosevelt. I think most folks knew about that. Seen qualities, obviously, acquire... Seen equalities, obviously acquiring an easement over the eastern portion of the property. It's important to see view shed protection. Agricultural land to conserve and protect. Part is contemplating someday in the future, maybe doing some agriculture on the eastern portion. And that is the LWRP. Any questions on that, folks? And then the coastal assessment form, the CAF, follows. Again, it speaks to the project being an acquisition one and the resources that are present there. There's the part one from our last meeting. We did review them. We will not take any action because we need to have those approvals back. Any questions? There's even a draft, I believe. And here's the description again. What the action is. Resources. And no exact acreage after the survey is conducted. Any questions on part two? Again, fairly easy to fill out. Your secret document, you're simply acquiring properties and protecting a portion of them at the same time. Construction is proposed at this time. And there's your.
Just to clarify, if in the future, you know, some comments came up earlier about potential trail connections or extensions of vehicular access, that would all be an entirely separate secret process.
Separate secret process. Okay. Other documents that were referenced as part of this determination, draft determination. Again, we won't act on anything tonight. But we'll be in a position to do so on the nineteenth, if so desired. This would be a good time to make a motion to establish a town board meeting for that date and time. I know we extended the public hearing with a notice to not only continue the public hearing, but also to conduct other business. Should we be in a position to go ahead and vote to approve this project?
That's the nineteenth of February.
Nineteenth of February.
Did you make the motion?
Uh, I think I made that motion. Okay, thank you, Bill. Uh, all in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any questions about the secret documents prepared? All right, good. Let's move on. Another item that we will likely not take any action on tonight, but we do need to advance because January is coming, whether we like it or not. And so we have to review the package's employee benefits. Each year we get the, what they call the placemat, or almost the placemat, it really narrowed down to many of the healthcare plans and options for us. If you had a chance to review, if you have any questions, please put them down. Sooner or later, we can get our agents on that. So then we're in a position, I think at our January tenth, if I have that right, January tenth is our first meeting of twenty twenty-four, that we can make a decision on the plan if we can. Certainly, we have to by the second meeting of January if we can.
January nine.
Aye, thank you, okay. Okay. Some other information. So we have a couple of department reports that got left out at our last meeting. They forgot to copy the highway department report. And I may have to do that. Or actually, Julia, would you like to do that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So to read some reports on progress related to the South Hill Bridge replacement, we have help with you and Hudson Valley Associates. Oscillated the bridge. The weight limits on town roads, which we've talked about a number of times over the past year or so, is progressing. The engineers for the town have provided the highway department with a list of the roads and a map indicating the posting locations. Signs are ordered and will be installed as the schedule permits. This is one that was something that we celebrated a couple of meetings ago. We were able to reduce the speed limit in Forest Park and College Park to twenty-five miles per hour, and the department has ordered and received those signs, waiting for official documentation from the state, and then we'll proceed with installation. The sign storage shed has a new roof. Roof was leaking, and they did that in-house. There is a new stop sign. Again, this is something we talked about at a few meetings in Elk Street, getting ready for the winter season with all of the trucks, sanders, and we did last meeting approve a sander body for one of the trucks. Forest Park drainage continues under discussion and review with the engineers. And again, we have been continuing to talk about the salt shed.
Um, we have some other correspondence. I'm not quite sure how those loaded out. But while we're on the subject of the Salt Hill Bridge, you know, the estimates have skyrocketed, and the actual construction will be. And so we're now looking at trying to get some more funding, perhaps through the county. They get an allocation. That won't be until twenty twenty-seven, but sometimes that can be accelerated. And so I reached out to the folks down there. There is about half a million dollars that they think may be available, when that's certainly just to our project, it could be made available to some other municipality. So with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and make that request. You know, until we go out to bed or the engineers go out to bed, we won't know exactly how much it's going to cost. But it's sort of frightening that, you know, their estimate of probable was nearly double what was put in the grant application just a few years ago, so. No worries. So we will need to, we will need to rustle up some more money before we go ahead and do construction. Now, we continue to advance the design of the bridge, and hopefully we'll put something forward for the community and for the town as a whole to take a look at.
And just briefly, do we know what the major factors are that are driving the cost to increase?
I'd like to issue a no comment on that, you know, there's two schools of thought. At first, there was inflation, then there was greed inflation. And so, you know, this is part of the problem with the all or nothing, when it rains, it pours strategy that unfortunately, you know, many governments' funding agencies embark on. When they throw a lot of money at something, even if it's important things like infrastructure, you assume you're going to get twice as many projects completed with twice as many dollars. But oftentimes, what you might find yourself seeing is that you're not getting that many more projects completed. They're just costing you that much more because the supply and demand for those services are out of balance. And so contractors that can do this type of work may or may not be pricing in a way that is affordable for municipalities as small as ours, and they just choose to go somewhere else. So I don't know. Again, this is just an estimate from the, they do it based upon recent bids that they've done for other municipalities, and that's where the hope came from. And this is not unique to Riddick, by the way, so. All right. And unfortunately, with the Bridge New York program, they have not, there's no allowance for additional funding. You can't go back, no matter how much. By the way, you saw the notice that I sent about having new funding available, and I think we should, and that's due at the end of January. I think we should put one of those two other bridges, or maybe even a culvert, in there, in the application, because that's going to make it important to us. We don't want to have to go it alone with the next bridge or two, so look for that, sorry, January ninth for approval to go up for a grant on Bridge New York. Okay, we had some correspondence from.
I'm sorry, Mr. Supervisor, did you want the board to move to authorize you to do the application? Because I didn't hear an action.
Well, I mean, we could do that if you all are fine with that. An application for Bridge New York, additional.
Maybe instead of ways.
For the other one. For the, okay, the application to the county?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, let's do that. That's the sponsor request.
This is for the current one.
This is for the current one. And there you see the original estimate for construction, which may be as much as two and a half million with the deficit. And so the question for what appears to be a little over half a million dollars. And here's the description. Advancing four hundred and sixty thousand. It's a twenty percent amount. Would you like to authorize me to submit this application, which was done with the assistance of our engineers Hudson Valley, engineering associates who are doing the design for the project?
Sorry.
Thank you, William. Is there a second? Thank you. Question, Christine?
So this is the current bridge project, what you had mentioned a minute ago. Was that a different?
A different one.
Right, okay.
And so that'll be January ninth. I'll take a look at the two projects.
There are two different ones, okay.
We'll have more information for that application. And we may at that time have some funding announcements, favorable funding announcements for that meeting as well as it relates to calling. Okay. Uh, on the Bridge New York twenty twenty-four, is that what you, you want to vote on that, Tim?
No, I don't think they're voting on that.
Oh, I thought we did.
I moved on.
Oh, that's right. You had a question.
Yeah, so, aye.
That worked. Julia?
I thought, uh, aye.
Aye, aye, we all voted. Okay. Uh, next up, Hudson Val, Hudson River. River Water, going backwards. So just for background, a little company called GE, um, something about PCDs and the Hudson River. I had the opportunity years ago, um, through seeing Hudson to actually go on one of these boat rides up into the area where they were conducting the remediation, and that was fascinating to watch. It was at the time they were hoping to have the EPA compel GE to clear up other hotspots in the river. Unfortunately, they were not successful in forcing GE to do so. Now, years later, there's evidence that shows that the cleanup didn't really turn out as well as hoped. And so what they are looking for is for us to sign on to a letter to support additional work, and so.
They don't even have the draft report from the EPA yet. I find it representative on their part. I mean, you know, before you start asking municipalities for supporting something like this, shouldn't the draft EPA report, which says it's forthcoming, be available for review? They don't have it either, so.
We did get other materials that indicated that they had testing results, independent testing results.
They did.
Right.
But I'd like to see what the EPA.
Though I think the point they're trying to make is pretty much once the EPA issues the report, it's really hard to get them to change the report. So they're trying to influence.
I get that, but we don't know what the EPA has said. I mean.
Please.
Yeah, we're for federal government.
Yes, so you should know.
So did, um, Bill, did you get a chance to do the webinar, the Hudson River PCDs?
No.
Okay. Julia? Thoughts?
Yeah, uh, clearly I am supportive of indicating that we want full cleanup. I did hear what they're saying about the timing. Can you go back up to the actual address?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm familiar with some of the testing results after the work that they did, but not everyone, maybe.
I actually was working Hudson River water when the cleanup was happening.
When it was happening, yeah.
So, and then testing at the time was also showing that it was not meeting the goals that EPA signed off on it anyway. So it's clearly, I mean, they've been trying to get this out of EPA twice already, because it's every five-year report.
Right.
So, and here we are, so.
You know, nothing, I don't know how far back, I mean, Julia, Bill, you probably don't go back this far, but there was quite a debate about dredging, whether or not you were actually making the problem worse.
Yeah.
It turns out dredging was very effective, more effective than they had hoped it would be, the technique.
Right.
You know, the problem is that they were essentially.
They didn't go as far as the initial plan proposed because GE was, of course, arguing the whole time, so.
Yeah, no, I would be comfortable signing a letter.
I just sort of feel like, I, I think a letter would be more persuasive. If you had the draft report, if what you're suggesting, Christine, is that EPA is not going to change their report, then I think signing a letter that responds to the draft, you, you can write a more persuasive and make a more persuasive argument because you're responding to what they're saying rather than presumptively assuming that, you know, I, I'm just, I'm not comfortable.
I think it's, you know. I think it's, you know, I think that part of the point is to say, we're watching you. We have data. We want you to consider this data before you issue a report.
So the basis, the basis is what is the acceptable level of P C B contamination in the Hudson River? And the answer is zero, at the only acceptable level. So all they're asking for, I think, and I'm correct me if I'm wrong, is for us to support the notion that because there are still hotspots, because the tests still show P C Bs up and down the river, that it's not protectable human health. And so I don't know necessarily that we need to see their report to be able to support that notion, but
I guess my point is, they hired their own independent consultant, who's going to be an advocate for them and for their agenda. And I mean, I worked for the federal government for 25 years, the job is to be independent and fair and fact-based. And I'd like to see what their report says before I start signing letters asking for things. Because we don't know what EPA is testing or who they use to test. I'm just, I'm a little cynical, let's put it that way, I've been around long enough, that organizations that come to the government asking for things prior to work being completed, makes me a little uncomfortable.
Well, I do understand what you're saying, but this has been decades. And, you know, there's not been good faith on many sides. So I think that, you know, perhaps if you had taken the webinar, maybe that would have helped bring you up to speed a bit. Anyway, I would make a motion that we sign on. Might as well, might as well vote on it. It's ten after ten.
I think Christine wants to get going. Julia?
Yeah, I would support that motion.
I'll abstain.
You're going to abstain, okay. We have a motion by Christine, we have a second by Julia Solomon. I'm going to support motion. I'm familiar with the test results, not all of them, but enough so to know that cleanup was not extensive enough. And, but I do agree, it would be nice to see the report. But as we found out tonight, oftentimes, we see the reports and we see the maps and we see the elimination of service. And we haven't even had a chance to express our viewpoint. All in favor, I think we have three votes on that. Other business. Folks, I think we are concluding for tonight. We will have our special meeting on the nineteenth, next week. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into attorney-client, and with all of you. Wonderful holiday season, it's already begun for so many, and I hope that you stay healthy. And then it's an enjoyable season for you all. Good night. And who would second that motion to attorney-client? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Ten ten points, yes. Thanks for coming.